Budget. This is something we talked about in the very beginning when we set the date. You have to have a 10-day notice.
Yeah.
We would have had to know. You have to know 48 hours in advance if you change that adoption hearing. If we would try to change the adoption hearing, it would not go into gateway until the 22nd of October. That's not enough time to have a 10-day notice prior to the meeting. So today is the adoption. Can you make changes next year? If there are things you want to do, you can make a list of additional appropriations, advertise them in December, and put them in the budget as amendments in January. That would be my recommendation this late in the game. And otherwise, you will adopt on last year's tax rate. And levy, you'll lose your levy growth. Your budgets, you'd have to almost redo every year in January. If you choose to do additionals in January, it's only the things that you might want to change from your comments today.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that. I know we've heard some comments today, some concerns. We can definitely take those into consideration, specific to how Jackie just instructed we can do that with additional appropriations and then finalize those in January. That being said, I feel pretty confident in the work that we put into this budget. I feel pretty confident in what we have here. And so I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2024 budget as it's been put together.
Can I make a comment on your levy for?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So one of the things that the council strives to do is not adopt the budget that is greater than the revenue, the new revenue coming in. That's something, especially in that general fund, that's one of the things that, when that changed several years ago, has put Carroll County in the position that it's at right now. When I look at the estimated revenues for next year along with the current levy that you're holding on your Form 4, that totals 9,300,000. You are currently at 9,400,000. So you're in that place that you want to be. We are adopting, or the Form 4 shows an adoption of 30,000 over the maximum levy. We always adopt over maximum levy. So you are solvent where you are. You're not high, but you also are adopting pretty close to that, to that new money coming in. While it's higher, there'll be a little bit of a fluctuation that will likely lose you out.
Yeah, thank you.
I move the budget being adopted.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the 2024 budget.
Not as presented. The original present, he wants it as you amended it. The budget request amended now. Presented would be what was originally put in, right?
As amended?
Yeah.
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 After we went through and changed.
Right, after your work sessions, yeah.
I'll change the motion.
Okay.
He amended the request. That's why I was asking.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to adopt the 2024 budget as amended by Doc Stoffer, seconded by Josh Plou. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries 6-0. Do we need to motion to adjourn this?
Do you think you can?
Just keep going.
Same meeting.
I think it's same meeting. It wasn't posted for two different meetings, was it?
It was all in line.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so I would like to pause and take a moment to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have invited Pastor Norris from St. Matthew's Lutheran Church here in Delphi to come and offer an opening prayer. Yeah.
Please stand. Let us pray. Almighty God, there is no authority except from you, and those that exist have been instituted by you. Direct and guide the government of Carroll County by your Holy Spirit, both to plan and accomplish those things which will benefit the people and provide for the needs of the community. Heavenly Father, you have given us this good land as our heritage. Grant that we always remember your generosity and constantly seek to do your will. Bless this county with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Bless the council members that they defend our liberties and give to them whom you have entrusted the authority of the government, the spirit of wisdom, that there may be justice and peace in our land. Bless them that we may be a people at peace amongst ourselves through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Father and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, before we move on to the consent agenda, I do want to take a moment and just recognize and welcome our newest council member, Mr. Taylor Fife. I'm excited to have you on the board and had opportunity to talk with Taylor. I think he's going to be a good and valued member of this council, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, we do have the consent agenda in front of us. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the September 21 regular meeting minutes and also the public hearing minutes from the 21st? Any concerns with passing those? I would entertain a motion to approve the September 21 minutes.
Shall I move?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Scott Ayers and seconded by Josh Plou. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Scott.
Are there any transfers listed on the consent agenda that we need to pull out and discuss individually?
I had a couple of questions. On the part-time operator for the transfer station, she's not here.
She had.
But I didn't see.
She has resigned, so that's why she's put on her part-time, because part-time is running it right now. And we're applying, we've got a job posting.
Right up by me, the director or the?
Transfer operator has resigned.
Got it.
And she's no longer working there. We have posted a job and part-timer, two part-timers are running it right now till we get a full-time.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other items that need hold and discuss?
I moved to approve the transfers of the consent agenda.
We've got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion on the floor by Josh Plou, seconded by Taylor Fife. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, those transfers are approved, 6-0. So moving on to our regular meeting agenda for today, I will start off our financial reports, just as a comment of note, through September 30th, departments should be at a budget utilization of about 75% give or take. So our county general balance right now is, through the end of September, is 7.4 million. There are appropriations to consider. Rainy Day Fund is at 4.3 million unchanged from last month, and Riverboat is up a bit from last month at $410,500. For my departments, the Coroner is at 54% year-to-date utilization, Emergency Management at 71%, Motor Vehicle Highway at 48%, and Carroll Manor at 60% budget utilization. So with that, Scott, if you can take it over?
Sure. No issues with my departments that are in the upper 70s, low 80s. I'm not concerned with any of them. We should finish out the year in good shape.
Great. Tracy?
Minor, all right, except I've got minor problems with the Veterans Office. I think he's outspent his part-time help budget allocation. I'm able to get the four, we won't get the other. Over spent the allocation. That is no major problem.
Okay. All right.
Commissioners, Council, 65, 64, Prosecutor at 70, EMS at 72, you know, the vehicles continue to be a problem for Doug, I think, oh, no, he's still here. So we're hanging on there, but you know, by the time we cycle through these new ambulances, hopefully our maintenance goes down, but operationally, I think everything's good.
Good. Any other questions or comments on financials? Taylor, I'll get with you, we have specific departments that we assign to go through, so we'll handle that for next month.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll hand it over to Beth for the auditors report.
We do have some things to be signed, so don't leave unless I start passing this one. We also have the ordinance for the budget that will need to be signed. I sent out the reports on October the 11th. I didn't know if anybody had any questions on them, especially you, Taylor. If you do, you can maybe come in and bring over some of the things if you have questions. Okay. I also put before you two budget worksheets, one for the project income user fees and one for the 2023 pre-trial service grant. That goes in your book. Just wanted to make sure you had those.
Those are just updates to put in the?
Yeah, they just put them in the book. The 2023 salary ordinance amendment is just put on patrol sergeant. That was the only thing that was changed on there.
Okay.
So I just need somebody to sign one of them, so I can have that you amended it today or amended it. You already have approved with all the business, it's a signature for the salary ordinance.
Okay. So we'll just take one hard copy and have everybody sign it?
That would be great.
All right, I'll get this.
The courthouse security job description, I put that on there because that's what told me to do in the minutes to put it back on the list meeting, but we went part-time on that, so we have asked Kent Irwin to give us a part-time job description. And we did receive it by today, but we were kind of slow to get that to him soon. HSA account, Josh had asked me to talk with the commissioners about the extra money that would be in the fund. And the commissioners did talk about it, and they approved a bonus HSA payout for those that qualify. This benefit is something that is offered to all employees, and it's their choice whether to utilize this benefit. So the stipulations to get this extra bonus HSA was that the employee must have completed and been paid out for both the March and September qualifiers, which is the blood work, and then two preventative, which is all free if you go to the Camden Clinic, but most, preventative are not being charged. And the employee must provide one more preventative that was not used in this last year from September or October 1st to September 30th of this year. And it would be paid, they would be paid out $1,000 from their, to their HSA account. That's how much money we have left. The preventative can be from, like I said, 10-1 of '22 to 12-8 of '23. That's when it's due, is the 12-8. We sent out an email with all the different kinds of preventives that the employee can use. And also then the commissioners will revisit it for next year on how much we get out for March and, or earned it from March and September, paid out in April and October. So that is my update.
How much extra is the bonus?
$1,000.
$1,000.
So I think that if everybody participates, we took an average of what, who did the, we can take an average, we took how many had completed both sides of the scenario, and there was 45. So I think it would be $1,000 left if everybody participates, but not everybody participates in every.
So I just want to say, you know, just to back up, I think from a benefits perspective, this is, this is a great way that we can show our appreciation of the employees. There's very few, if any, what this functionally does is pays the deductible for every single employee.
Thank you.
So they're basically every county employee that chooses to, I mean, as long as they're opting to go through the things that, that make them eligible for this, which is, these are not huge hurdles, and they're just, you know, whatever. And we're not in on the policy about what they have to do, that's a commissioner's decision, but us funding this gives essentially a zero deductible policy to every county employee, which is kind of unheard of, in my opinion.
It's not to every county employee.
Well, to, to people that are in the health plan participating in the health, excuse me. So I, I think that's, you know, I think that's pretty strong and just kind of speaks to our commitment to the stack.
Do we know what the preventives are?
Yes, and they do too. That has been sent out to them several times.
So we really don't need a motion for this, right? Because we have?
No, it's been passed by the commissioners. Commissioners are in charge of benefits. You're in charge of funding.
Yeah, that's what I mean. We don't foresee any extra additional needs, right? At this time?
No.
Okay. Well, either way, we'll make it, so.
And I believe that's.
Okay. Specific to the courthouse security job description, like you said, we funded that at part-time, so we're waiting on Irwin's office to get us the revision on that. Fundamentally, do we need to table that again, or is it just understood that we'll revisit it when we get the new?
We should have it by November.
Job description, okay.
And you'll just put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're fine.
Great. Okay, the other thing that I wanted to bring up was the innkeeper's tax. I had asked Beth to put that on the agenda for today. Eric did get us the ordinance for that. However, I looked at it with Julia. She wanted some changes to be made, and I didn't get back with Eric in time for today's meeting to have that ready, so I would like to table that discussion. Julia is aware, and that's why she's not here this morning. So we'll table that for November, pending, yeah, pending the revisions to the ordinance.
Tim?
Yes?
Could, could I get a copy of that before the next meeting, if you wouldn't mind?
A copy of the ordinance?
Innkeepers, what you're working on, once you finish it with.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Would you like to have this one, see what she's gonna?
Sure.
Does that got changes or? This is prior to changes. This is the one you said, I don't think it has any changes to it, so.
Well, I know we asked a question of how this was being regulated and who was going to oversee that, that how, how is that going to work? Because I don't see any changes to any things.
What do you mean?
There's the innkeepers, I've forgotten council, I don't remember the exact name of it, that's about it, who oversees it, that is a commissioner's function. And so that would need to be reinstituted, because I assume that's going to stay up like everything else related to innkeeper's tax, but work and any expenditures could be made. I don't know that we have a, an appointment to that, I don't recall. Seems like it's all commissioners, but. Well, that has to get instituted by the commission before any expenditures can be made.
Okay.
This resolution is just accepting that we're going to create it and?
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything for that specific procedure you're talking about, that has to be done by.
Yeah, there's more legwork to do on this before we look at it next month, so we'll, I'll work on that with Irwin and Eric, and we'll have some better details in November.
Is this going to be bed and breakfast sort of thing?
There's any, anybody that rents, so it could be like, I think it could be campgrounds and?
Under 30 days.
What's that?
Under 30 days.
Okay, yeah, so anywhere where you're renting for under 30 days, like it's a vacation rental by owner, campground, ins, bed and breakfast, they can collect this, we can collect this tax, and it's just revenue to the county.
I mean, that's been the biggest question that I've had, is that you're going to regulate this, how are they going to calculate it? And how does it work? And I, I don't have the answers.
I'm not prepared to answer that today either, but there are, there are processes in place to take advantage of this, so we'll nail it down. Okay, moving on to the additionals that we advertised last month.
Just want to confirm on the 911 payroll, those, these three additionals fund the increase that the council passed in August or September, whenever that meeting was?
That is correct.
So, okay. Move to approve the additionals, all the additionals as advertised?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Josh Plou, seconded by Tracy Martin, to approve the three additionals that were advertised last month. Any other discussion or question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries 6-0. We do have some additionals to be advertised. We don't need a vote on these, but does anybody have any questions or discussion to be had on these?
How did Riverboat get decided?
This is all by EMS, or EMA, so maybe he could explain all this? This one is from the commissioners for.
So since you asked about the Riverboat one, the, when we purchased the facility down at 405 Cottage, there was money left over out of the purchase. So they authorized to purchase the sign that we put up. That's still what's left over at the last commissioners' meeting. They wanted to upgrade the sound system for future meetings because of the last joint meeting down there, it was really hard to hear. So I went to the auditor to see how much was left. That's how much is left in there. I'm working with Randy to see if, what we can do within that amount to upgrade the sound system down there. So that's what that's for. The state homeland security grant for 146,000, during, when that grant opened, there's two grants that I could apply for. One of those national priorities for soft targets, which is the one that I applied for all the security equipment for the courthouse that we've been looking for, just, that one got denied. When I reached back to the state to reach out to FEMA on why, that got denied as a soft target, they said, do the king competition. The only way I can figure that out is, you know, on a national priority, we're going against everybody in the nation on those. Small county, they probably didn't think we're as important as the bigger ones. That's an assumption.
Sure.
They haven't given me a firm answer on that. As far as the enduring needs, for five years, I have been planning for the Gators, which is part of the capital improvement plan. I got those. Increasing purchase of barriers, which is a new style of barriers due to the change of threat, along with what the state fire marshal has been dinging us on with the use of the Yodocs, because it's not easily accessible for the fire department when they're going for fireworks. So buying a different style of barrier, so it's easier for the fire department to gain access to the festival areas when we're having the festivals. So that's what that 146, 340 is doing. And then I just found out two days ago that the hazardous material emergency preparedness program grant I got awarded for 14,000. That is for a commodity study to see how much hazardous material is actually flowing through our county. And we're contracting with a company out of Indianapolis to come in and do that, which will be part of the multi-hazard mitigation program that we have to do every five years to stay in compliance with FEMA, to remain eligible for the federal grants. So all those, the two grants have been awarded, even though we're, they, you know, advertised them, they're fully, we spend the money upfront, fully reimbursable grants. So even though we advertised them, I guess my question is, can I go ahead and order the book? It's about 45 day turnaround, 45 to 100 day turnaround.
I don't think we can advise you to do that, but.
All right.
I will tell my decision.
Okay. Well, I'll wait and.
You might just let them know that it looks good, but I think technically you're supposed to wait until it's. until it's money in the bank. Kind of their risk, not ours, but still, it's the appropriate process. Right. And then, mentioned it during the budget hearings, as far as that. What we encumbered last year for the work on the Harley Tower. The FCC is currently 70 to 90 days behind on issuing the pairing license for the Harley Tower. So it doesn't look like that upgrade is going to get done this year. And I don't know, can we encumber a second year, or do we have to scrap and? Is that the repeater? Yeah. The 60? To go in, yeah, go in wireless, so we can get rid of the phone lines that's causing all the problems.
You can't encumber two years, you can't encumber something for two years.
If you encumber this year and the contract didn't get satisfied, you can use that same contract and encumber next year.
We encumbered it from last year, the equipment just arrived last month, and now we're running into an SEC licensing issue.
So you still have, it's still the same, it can only be, only that amount can be encumbered, you can't encumber more. Well, he could if he had some left over, but that amount can be encumbered for that specific invoice of, for a contract that was there.
So you can't for two years?
As long, yeah, as long as the contract has not been satisfied. Because it's, it's within your 18-month window that we've worked on, that encumbrance would have been a part of.
So it's the 18 months.
So it's 18 months?
Well, no, it's just the fact that once it's encumbered, it can be spent for that specific amount or that specific project. If something changed on that and he was ordering a different piece of equipment, then that would have to fall off and you would have to do an additional. As long as that specific document that you encumbered with is still valid, then it can be encumbered again.
And there's a limit on the number of times?
That's correct.
Okay. That's something.
That's why Jackie's working big bucks.
Okay, so I can labor, but I don't have to sweat the. Because I was going to go over and put the slam down on Rick today.
Go ahead and do that.
Feeling froggy? Those blue folders is a copy of the award letter of the state homeland security grant, and it's been brought up a couple times about my capital improvement plan. There's an updated capital improvement plan in there for you guys, even though it's never been officially adopted.
Appreciate you keeping your eye on.
Good job.
Copy of the grants and.
I guess I move to adjourn.
Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn, is there a second? We've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.